I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, March 29th, 2016. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Phil Vell, here. Sandra, here. Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Yehar.
Here.
Marcus.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. I'd like to thank you all for coming out this evening for this special meeting. We appreciate your being here, and those of you who would like to participate, we'll go to that first, and then we'll hear a staff presentation on the staff's recommendation, and then board discussion, and vote on this agreement that is in front of us. I think with that, we'll get straight to it, public hearing and public participation. Let me read the ground rules for those of you who haven't been with us before. Board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There is a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two minutes begins, and turning yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. And again, we appreciate everybody joining us tonight. Our first speaker is Jim Reed. Jim Reed, you present?
Could you turn around?
Yeah, sorry. Absolutely. I will eat the microphone. Volume seems a little lower than usual. Let's see, first speaker is Jim Reed. Is Jim present? All right, moving on to Elizabeth Meyer. Ms. Meyer, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. So my name is Elizabeth Meyer, and I would like to share with you a comment and a question. I am the parent of a BVSD kindergartner and a Flatiron Meadows resident. We recently relocated here from California, and we chose this neighborhood specifically because it's in BVSD and because of the promised school. My question is, it appears from what I can understand, and these are the facts as I understand them, so please correct me or respond if necessary, that the Anadarko oil rights predate 2013. The thousand-foot setback started around 2013. The press release announcing the school was March 2015. So what has changed since then? Postcards were sent out to community members in September of 2015. Community meetings were held in October of 2015. But it wasn't until January of 2016 that all of a sudden it seemed that the brakes were being put on this project. And I do not understand, and I sincerely hope, that during this meeting, somebody can either just go ahead and greenlight the project, or explain to me what's changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Our next speaker is Cindy Gibbs. Ms. Gibbs, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Cindy Gibbs, and I am a resident of Flatiron Meadows. I'm also a 13-year resident of Erie, and I have two school-aged kids that are affected by this school decision. This is my third time speaking here in support of the proposed Flatiron Meadows K-8 school, and I want to start by thanking you, Superintendent Messinger, and to the members of the board for your support to get to this point. I can only imagine how difficult it has been for you to sit in your chairs and listen to our inquiries, our accusations, and our comments with no ability to respond. I understand that we were not privy to all the information on the table, and in turn, it forces us to draw many conclusions based on limited considerations. From the bits and pieces of information that has been released, I now understand the level of detail that has gone into this agreement, and I commend you for all your dedication and due diligence in this complicated situation. And that's exactly what this is. It is a complicated situation. It is not black and white, and there are few vocal few that will make you feel otherwise. This agreement has many layers, and I hope that the ignorance of others that haven't taken the time to educate themselves on this will not affect your support. This agreement is a win-win for all of us. The Erie Board of Trustees has approved a resolution supporting construction of the school as planned, and Superintendent has also recommended moving forward. So now tonight, we await a vote for you to accept the deed so construction can go on as planned. I am guessing at this point you have already made your decision, and so me standing up here is trivial. My one request before you cast your vote is to take a note of the passionate parents that have stood before you every month for the past three months. We believe in this school, and we know that at times we may not have appeared to be on the same team, but we are all standing here together now. Let's get this new school built. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristen Lamb, who has been given two minutes from Pam Perry. So Ms. Lamb, you have four minutes this evening. Welcome back.
Hi there. Thank you. My name is Kristen Lamb. My husband and I are Flatiron Meadows residents, and I'm here for the fourth time to urge the board to vote in favor of the school this evening. To begin with, I would like to commend the board on its concerted efforts to come up to speed on this complex issue in this short time, and thank the board for prioritizing this important matter tonight. I'm sure you've been bombarded lately with information, questions, and appeals from concerned members of the community. I am also sure that you have received some extremely emotionally charged communications from people who may not be members of this community, who may not have children slated to attend this school, or who may have ultimately put their own personal views on environmental issues above the needs of the community at large. I urge you to consider the source and motives behind communications suggesting that BVSD may have sold its soul to the oil and gas industry. Please keep in mind that the vocal few touting these extremist environmentalist views, supported by data of dubious origin and of little to no relevance to the facts at hand, are staunch opponents of oil and gas in any form, and will stand in the way of any progress in this community even remotely related to oil and gas interests. Unfortunately, the narrative on this issue has been unreasonably skewed by these outspoken few. Ultimately, a positive vote to build this school represents not a capitulation to the influence of oil and gas, but rather a show of support for the safety of the community on the part of BVSD. Pro-school is by no means synonymous with pro-oil and gas. In fact, quite the contrary. It has been suggested that we demand that Anadarko relinquish their rights to develop the well. I'm sure at this point your attorneys have made clear that Anadarko is under no obligation and in fact has no legal capability to surrender its rights to that well site. This again represents an unrealistic demand and an inaccurate framing of this issue. The issue here is not, can we stop drilling in this neighborhood? That's a fight for another day, which I hope we do win down the road. The issue today is, can we safely develop much-needed infrastructure in this rapidly growing community while cooperating with competing but legally-held interests in the area? As you have seen from the petition we forwarded to the board today, at least 400 members of this community believe the answer is a resounding yes. No doubt you have seen the graphics illustrating the extent to which Erie is a veritable oil field. We are surrounded by active and inactive wells. Just in the Flatiron Meadows neighborhood alone, we are encircled by at least three active wells. I do not point this out to suggest a sentiment of what's one more well. Rather, I hope to emphasize that a vote to develop this school represents an opportunity for BVSD to champion the safety of our community. None of those three active wells encircling our neighborhood is subject to the strict risk mitigation procedures that Dr. Messinger has negotiated with Anadarko. While the COGCC regulates oil and gas development, most Erie residents will tell you that their setback regulations do little to mitigate air noise and site pollution. It is critical to understand then that in the absence of the Flatiron Meadows school, the future well site is at risk of seeing an oil well developed subject only to the standards imposed by the state, whatever they may be at the time. But should the board vote yes tonight to develop this much-needed school, our community will gain the added protection of the mitigation procedures developed by Dr. Messinger and Anadarko. I hope that the board recognizes that this represents a win over oil and gas, not a capitulation, a chance for the developer of the well site to be held to a higher standard to ensure the safety and quiet enjoyment of our community by children attending the school and by residents of Flatiron Meadows. Please do not leave us exposed to relatively unchecked future drilling. In sum, I urge the board to see this as an opportunity to defend the safety of this community, to promote progress and development of much-needed infrastructure, and to set a high standard for oil and gas safety in this community going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brooke Perlmutter. Brooke Perlmutter.
Hi.
Oh yeah, hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Precious cargo there.
Yes. Hi, I'm Brooke Perlmutter, and this is my daughter Bryn. My husband and I built our home in Flatiron Meadows primarily because we have so much respect for the Boulder Valley School District, and we wanted to send our two children to the promised K-8 school. I brought my daughter here because I want you to see a child who's directly impacted by the decision you will make tonight. Dr. Messinger, thank you for recommending to move forward with the school and to the board. I ask that you please follow Dr. Messinger's recommendation and vote yes to build the school as planned in Flatiron Meadows. Thank you.
Thank you. April Bush is our next speaker. Ms. Bush, welcome.
Hi, I'm April Bush. I actually work for BVSD. I teach 4th grade at Mason Elementary. And I'm just going to read my speech here. As a teacher of over nine years at Mason Elementary, I value and believe in the vision and mission of Boulder Valley. My husband and I purchased a home in Erie for the sole purpose of having our children attend a neighborhood school in Boulder Valley. Although our children could open and enroll at Mason Elementary, which is a great school where I teach, I believe that there are many benefits to attending a neighborhood school. Our son, Keen, will be the first kindergarten class to attend this school in 2017. If the school is built on time and as promised, this will alleviate any undue stress to our son not having to attend two different schools at such a young age. I want to thank Dr. Messinger for proposing to move forward to build this school on time and in its original location in Flatiron Meadows, and also want to thank the board for the consideration to move forward to build this school. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Sax, who has been given two additional minutes from Scott Kennedy, I believe. Welcome, Ms. Sax.
My name is Karen Sax, and this is my daughter Scarlett, and tonight is the second time that I've appeared before the board regarding the building of the K-38 school campus planned to support the growth of my community in Flatiron Meadows. Before beginning, I want to apologize to Bruce Messinger and to Boulder Valley School District Board members for any suspicion I may have cast on Dr. Messinger and Boulder Valley School District due to the forced lack of transparency that clouded my ability to understand the timeline of events with regard to planning the Flatiron Meadows school campus. Sorry for the beating, Dr. Messinger. You withstood my blows with noble grace that speaks remarkable character. After speaking at the board meeting on March 8th, I reflected further and arrived at the conclusion that Superintendent Messinger acted with the realization that BVSD faces a complex predicament when supporting the growth of its communities surrounded by wells, or the potential development of such, in Erie. The Boulder Valley School District schools currently supporting the growth of Erie are bursting at the seams, and that isn't fair to the teachers who work there, nor the students who must attend these schools. So of course BVSD must build a new school to support the growth of our community. And since Mayor Harris has already confirmed that there is no site available in Boulder annexed Erie that would accommodate a school campus while meeting the COGCC's current 1,000-foot setback requirement, Boulder Valley School District has no choice but to build a new school that could someday be in near proximity to oil wells. The presence of oil wells is highly objectionable to myself and members of my community who have had who would have to live near those wells and be subjected to any health and safety risks 24/7, as well as BVSD. The good news is that Anadarko, the entity contracted to develop the adjacent site should there be plans to do so in the future, has stated that currently there is no plan to develop the site adjacent to the school site in Flatiron Meadows. I understand that Anadarko has cut its operations in Erie down to one rig, and its operations overall in Colorado have been cut by 80%. And Bruce Messinger has acted proactively so as to mitigate any possible health or safety concerns that might be associated with the potential development of that site by reaching an agreement with Anadarko to eliminate emissions by utilizing a self-contained system that would tie into Anadarko's existing infrastructure, eliminating emissions and storage tanks on-site, and limit drilling to times when students aren't in school if plans are ever made to develop the adjacent site. As a resident with a home that is near the site, I consider the agreement with Anadarko a win for the entire community. On this note, I understand that the board has been inundated with videos from residents living in other cities or school districts that demonstrate toxic emissions from wells. My husband, Glenn Oxiger, is a highly-trained chemical analyst, a specialist, who has over 25 years of extensive experience in various testing methods, including infrared testing and gas chromatography. He conceded his time, well, he didn't concede his time to me. I think he might be speaking later. But I would like to state that he has that he holds that the videos of the well emissions recorded with an FLIR camera cannot be used to support anything more than claims that some sort of emissions are being discharged. The video itself is not enough to identify or quantify the specific emissions. This isn't to say that well emissions are not toxic. I believe they are. But the videos themselves cannot be used to support claims of toxic emissions, as toxicity is determined by level of exposure. Nevertheless, regardless of the ability or inability of FLIR camera videos to detect toxic emissions from wells, any arguments presented with the use of said videos are irrelevant in this case due to the elimination of emissions above ground by the use of a closed-loop system that would feed directly into the existing infrastructure. So as a parent whose child is affected by the overcrowding of the current neighborhood school supporting my community, as well as a resident of Erie affected by the health and safety risks of the proliferation of wells that already surround my community, I want to thank Dr. Messinger and BVSD for the earnest effort exerted to make the best of this complex situation, and I urge the board to consider the favorable mitigation reached by Dr. Messinger and Anadarko, and respond to the urgent need for a new school to support its community by voting in favor of accepting the deed of property at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kimberly Anaya. Anaya, welcome.
Thanks so much for allowing me to speak again tonight. This is my fourth time speaking in front of you to plead with you to have our school built on time on the plot of land that was provided to you by the original developer of Flatiron Meadows. Please don't let a few scary emails influence your decision tonight. Those who are passionate about this project and directly impacted by this decision have showed up week after week and consistently begged you to build the school. In addition to the fear of many parents of overcrowded classrooms should this project be delayed, we are also counting on this school to be our leverage for fighting against a potential future oil well. When we all moved to Flatiron Meadows, we signed an agreement saying we wouldn't fight oil and gas. Therefore, this school is our only leverage to fight against the potential drilling, because then we're not fighting as homeowners that sign an agreement not to complain. We're fighting as parents of students that go to this school. It's literally our only way to fight that potential well. Plus, we also get the backing of a well-respected school district fighting with us against that well. BVSD and Dr. Messinger, we are so thankful for your negotiations with Anadarko, who have promised that if they do drill, it will be a closed-system well without tanks stored on-site. For the health of our children living in our community, please build the school so that these promises are fulfilled if they ever do decide to drill and permits are somehow passed. Please do what's best for our community and the children that live in Flatiron Meadows, and vote in favor of building the school tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Diatillo is next. Good evening.
Hi, how are you? My name is Hillary Diatillo. I'm a resident of Orchard Glen, which is in Erie. My husband and I have two sons that we are planning on sending to the new school, beginning in fall 2017. I urge you to please move forward with the school as planned. The communities of both Erie and Lafayette are really depending on this new school. The people who actually live in Boulder County do want the school, as shown by the bond being passed and by the people that continue to show up, write letters, fill out the petition. We very much need and want this school. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Liz Austin. Ms. Austin? Hi, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Liz Austin, and I live in Flatiron Meadows. If BVSD knew that the COGCC would change the setback to 1,000 feet, perhaps you too would have liked to pick a different location for the school, but this is the situation you are in. It is not ideal, and none of us want a well in our backyards, and certainly not one near our school, but this is the situation you are in. I believe you have reached the best option to coexist with a potential oil well. I want to thank you for conducting the health and safety study and working so closely with Anadarko to find a compromise for moving forward with this much-needed school. Anadarko has one of the best health and safety records in Colorado. If they were going to develop this well, it would have been seven years ago when oil was well over $100 a barrel. Anadarko lost over $1 billion last year, laid off many employees, and their drill count is down to one in Colorado. If they drill, Anadarko will be using a closed system utilizing existing well infrastructure. The setback regulations could change again next year, and so delaying the school for another location is not viable option with the already-existing oil well surrounding the neighborhood. This is the best-case scenario and option available right now. I try not to live my life plagued by what-ifs. The development of this well is a what-if. The need for the school is now, not two, five, or 10 years. It is this very moment. Please accept the deed tonight and move forward with the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Jaffe. Mr. Jaffe, are you with us? Hi. Welcome.
I want to thank the board for allowing me to speak. I too moved here two years ago from Baltimore with my wife and seven-year-old daughter. We chose Boulder County, Erie, Flatiron Meadows because of the infamous school district that resides here in Boulder Valley School District. I want to thank Dr. Messinger for moving forward with the school. For one of the things that kind of perplexed me to me with the EPA and the Colorado Oil and Gas Community or Committee, haven't revealed any dangers regarding any emissions. We all live here, we all want to go to school here, and since there aren't any detectable safety hazards that are emitted from that type of a well, I just don't understand why we would be having this kind of problem so late in the date. So again, I want to thank Dr. Messinger and the board for hearing us and moving forward for the school that's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Hunter. Linda Hunter. Ms. Hunter, are you here? Okay. We'll move on to Tina Bermudas. Good evening.
Hi.
Good.
Thanks.
Hi. My name is Tina Bermudas. I'm a Boulder County Erie resident just north of the Flatiron Meadows development. I'm in Candlelight Ridge. I'm a veteran teacher of 16 years, turned to stay-at-home mom. I am a master teacher with a certification in Colorado, New York, and a national certification. I'm not here to repeat all of the facts that you have been presented to you in the past several months. You've heard it all several times, but tonight I'm compelled to speak to you because I was struck by something I heard at the last meeting, and it has not sat well with me. Last month, the DAC reported their findings from a survey they sent out. I was awestruck by the large percentage, was it 90%, of those surveys requesting social and emotional support in the schools across the board, elementary, middle, and high school. I know that it struck with you because several of you asked questions about that particular number. From my extensive experience as a teacher, there were some years that I had class sizes of 35 to 38. Those years, I found it tremendously difficult to make meaningful contact with all of my students. Often, most of my attention was given to those requiring the most need. The years that I had smaller class sizes, I was able to make deeper connections with students and parents, thus eliminating the need to have more children sent to counseling. Wouldn't it make more sense to give teachers smaller class sizes so that they can make deep connections with their students every day? Most students are literally one caring adult away from being successful, and oftentimes it is the teacher or the teachers that they see daily that make the difference. It will be far less costly in so many levels to build the school to keep the class sizes down in our area, thus creating optimum learning environments and allowing teacher time to build connections with all their students, not just the ones with the greatest need. Please give our students the optimum learning environments that they need, and teachers who have the time to get to know every child in their class. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frank Mueller. Mr. Mueller? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Frank Mueller, and my partner and I live in the Orchard Glen neighborhood. We have two school-aged children that are affected by your decision tonight. I would like to see the K-38 school being built in the Flatirons Meadow neighborhood. However, it appears that this is now in jeopardy due to where the school site is planned, where the original drill site is located, and the 1,000-foot setback requirement from high occupancy buildings. If it helps to plan to go forward, BVSD should consider seriously consider flipping the site for the community park and the school. This would provide an additional buffer between the drill site and the school and likely conform to the 1,000-foot setback. I originally proposed this at a Town of Erie meeting without getting any consideration from the Board of Trustees. I believe I also brought this up at the school planning community meeting in October, and I believe it was Mr. Messinger or one of the architects that responded they would expect the Anadarko subsidiary to relinquish their surface rights. Apparently, this is not going to happen, and now the plan for the school in our neighborhood is in jeopardy. Have you considered swapping the sites for the community park and the school? And if so, what are the concerns of any? Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Scott Charles. Mr. Charles, good evening.
Thank you. I'm going to embarrass myself, and this is not my normal voice. I've been sick, I apologize. I'm Scott Charles. I'm a trustee for the Town of Erie. I also happen to be a resident of Flatiron Meadows. My wife and two children and I moved to the community just six months ago, 99% of the reason for this school. I'm not going to repeat everything that's been really eloquently and well-thought-out said by my neighbors here tonight, but I did just want to thank you and recognize all of you for all of your efforts, especially Dr. Messinger. Being a board member myself for the town, I know what it's like sitting on that side of things, and no decision is ever easy, especially one such as this. So I really appreciate all of your time and consideration, and I know the community will really appreciate when you move forward with this school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, everybody. Move to our next agenda item, which is the action item 3.01, approval of agreement and acceptance of deed, Flatirons Meadows School Site. I need a motion. Richard?
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve the agreement and acceptance of deed for Flatirons Meadows School Site.
And we need a second? Jenny? Discussion, perhaps we could begin discussion with Dr. Messinger offering an overview of the staff's recommendation.
President Fuqua, members of the board, and those that attend this evening, welcome. I'm going to give a brief overview, recap of where we've been and where we believe we are at this time. As President Fuqua mentioned, it is our recommendation that we proceed with the mitigation agreement with Anadarko and also securing the land that's been proposed for the school site. In 2013, when this land was identified as a possible school site, 15 acres accompanied by an eight-acre park next to it, we began work on consideration for that, and ultimately when the bond passed in November 2014, having the resources to proceed with the construction. At the time that the land was identified, the setback for oil and gas development near high occupancy buildings was 500 feet, and as you know, since that time, that has changed to 1,000 feet by the Oil and Gas Commission. Some of the time that has gone and effort that has gone on in recent months around this, and some of the uncertainty about how we proceed with this was many hours invested by staff of our school district, as well as Heinz Development, the community staff, as well as Anadarko, really meeting over many hours, many days, trying to problem-solve this situation. Just for the benefit of a recap, as you know, because we've stated it publicly, there were several options we considered because of this 1,000-foot setback that evolved in August of 2013. We explored the feasibility of having the drilling occur at a place other than the acreage that sits next to this proposed school site, and were not able to identify a location within the development or nearby that Anadarko could proceed to drill or mine the resources from, the both service use agreement they had, and also the mineralites that were subsurface. Also, we looked for alternative sites to build the school in the development, and again, because of other well locations and other factors within the development, we did not find a satisfactory alternative location. Again, worked closely with Heinz, the development company, to do that. We also pursued- We also pursued the option of acquiring the mineral rights for the property so that the land and oil wells would never be developed on this 2.6 acres that sits adjacent to the property. So we were closely with Anadarko and also those subsurface mineral right owners of that. Those three strategies took months of many meetings and work and ultimately did not result in a recommendation we could bring forward to the community or to the board. So our last effort was to really seriously explore the feasibility of building on this proposed site. Would it be appropriate around health and safety issues? We knew from our research and work on the land itself, it was an ideal school site, probably why it was identified, and designing a school to be located on this campus would not only serve the students who attend there but the community. Well, we've been working on a master plan for the 23-plus acres in partnership with the community of Erie, so we would have not only a wonderful school but also an incredible campus to host those educational services. So we reached out to the Colorado Department of Health and also to the National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health, and asked them to share with us their research, their work around health and safety issues, given the nature of what this well would be once it was in production. And so they were very cooperative. We spent, again, hours of working with them to determine risks associated with that. Ultimately, based on the information provided by those health professionals and our understanding of what would be the drilling and production that potentially could occur on this site, led us to where we are with our recommendation that we proceed with this site. Some of what you have to consider this evening is not only the acceptance of the deed for the land for the construction of the school that we would proceed, but also an agreement with Anadarko, the present lease owner of the surface rights for that area. So what you have found in that agreement incorporated in that after your input as members of the elected board as well as staff and others that we consulted with, experts in the field, is reference to best management practices, and by the nature of these wellheads that would be if and when there's production on this site, would be a system that takes the product and goes into a direct gas line, and there would not be any storage or transfer of product on the site that would be held at another location in the development. This would be a direct pipeline that has been identified that would run to that storage container or beyond, potentially another line beyond and outside of the area. We've reached agreement with Anadarko that, and that if they were to develop this site, there would be a potential upwards of four wells, up to four wells that could be developed on this site in agreement. We've had many conversations with them about drilling schedules and production schedules, that this would occur with due notice to the school district and also would occur at a time that the school would not be occupied with the, as you've read in the agreement, with the kind of notice that we would receive, and targeting initially probably the summer months would be the best time for this to occur in the event that they do choose to drill on that property and receive permit from the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission. We believe that that is a window that this could occur when the school would not be occupied. So what you have in your packet, your electronic packet, is an overview of what I just described to you, also a deed for the property, of which if you accept that property, we can continue with planned construction. You also have in your materials, which has been public, is a resolution by the Board of Trustees of the Town of Erie supporting construction of the school on this proposed site. Also, a resolution which you would take action on, authorizing the acceptance of the title for that, and also a setback and mitigation agreement that has been crafted with the Anadarko Oil and Gas Company. I just want to publicly acknowledge the many hours that Dick Bump and Phil Barber, attorneys working with us as representing the school district in this, also Anadarko Oil and Gas, their legal team as well as their development team, Heinz Development, their staff and their attorney who've worked with us, and also the Erie Board of Trustees and their staff who have been involved for well over a year working with us on this. It is the, my recommendation, the recommendation of our staff, that we proceed with the construction of the school. We believe with your support this evening in acting on acceptance of the deed and the mitigation agreement, we can stay on schedule with the construction of the school, and our plan is that we'd open for student attendance in the fall of 2017. So gets a quick overview, Sam, of what's in the materials, and I'd be glad to answer questions. I know both Dick Bump and Phil Barber are here also to answer questions and provide additional information if that would be helpful.
Great, thank you, and glad to have you with us, Dick and Phil. Board members, questions? Who would like to begin? Questions, comments? Y'all ready to vote? Tom?
So first of all, thank you all for coming. I've mentioned that before when you've come out. I know we need a school in Erie. I know all your concerns and your passion, and my goal is to try to understand what's going on here and make sure that we have a good school site going forward. We could live with this school for the next 70 years. Most of, the average date our schools were built in BVSD was in 1950, so we're living with schools that are 70 years plus old right now. So we need to consider everything we're doing very carefully here, and I know you understand that. So I've been on the board for six and a half years, and I was on the board in October 2012 when the, the school district and developer discussed dedication of this site for a potential school in Erie. At that time, I was told as a board member that this is an ideal site, is the best one around, and that we, we should plan on building a school there. And so literally, that's, that's all the information I recall hearing about this site, even through the, the bond discussion and bond elections until literally about a month ago. And about a month ago is when I learned that the, the site had been actually platted or replatted in the summer of 2013, and the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission shortly thereafter then changed the setbacks to 1,000 feet. So that was all a surprise for me, so, you know, my goal over the last month has been trying to understand all the implications of that. What I've come to learn, and what we weren't able to share with, with you guys at the time, was that there are numerous historical, legal, and safety issues that have to be considered, and I'm sure many of you guys are well aware of those. At least my initial focus was on, on safety, and why did the Colorado Oil and Gas Commission change the setbacks? What was the rationale? Were there safety issues? Were there studies? What, what was their motivation in doing that? And I have yet to receive a satisfactory answer for that. So I had also suggested during the period of the last couple of weeks, what one of the speakers mentioned is, can we move the school site, school building as it exists, shift it over into the park area without changing its footprint or its, most of its design in order to move us a little further away? I don't believe that'll take us completely out of the setback, but it certainly will help a lot, and I don't believe that option has been fully considered yet. The, the focus here recently has been on negotiations with Anadarko about safety issues associated with that. I first saw this agreement last Thursday evening, and with the Easter holidays going on, I wasn't able actually to read through it until Sunday evening, and posed a number of questions, which I received answers to today, and that led to some more questions and which I received some answers from this afternoon. You know, it's one of these things that I think that we've been moving awfully fast on. I feel very uncomfortable with the process. Feel like we're under pressure, being told that if we don't do it right now, it's going to cost us million dollars more, and it's going to, millions of dollars more, and it's going to also, you know, take years longer. I, I, I don't believe that we've really fully investigated that, in my opinion. I'm not sure that, that it's really that, that dire of a strait if we really take the time to understand what's going on. I think the agreement has done some good things. We got changes in the agreement that I saw today, some modifications. The, the different areas originally talked about best efforts and were practicable and wording like that. I was very uncomfortable with that, and fortunately, that was changed from being best, best efforts to drill in the summer to we will only drill in the summer when school is not in session. So that's, that's, that's one of the major, I think, good things about this agreement. Also, there's something else that I learned this afternoon that I didn't know. With this land comes along with some surface usage agreements. In fact, there are, there are at least two, and they're entwined somewhat. And these surface area agreements basically state that, that buildings can't be built within the setbacks, and so that taking title of the land means that without some agreement, we would have to abide by those setbacks. And currently, we wouldn't be able to build a school within that tract of property with, with those requirements of that special usage agreement. So the second good thing about this agreement was that Anadarko then said that they would, they would not challenge that, and they would allow, you know, building of the school within the setbacks and essentially waiving the rights of the surface usage agreements. So this has all been literally happening today, and so I, I'm very, very uncomfortable with this agreement where it is now. I don't think that we've optimized it. I think there's more work to do. I want a school built there, and I want it built soon, but I think there's a little bit more work to do. I think this, this agreement can be optimized. I think we need to carefully look into shifting the school building location into where the park is platted now, and I think we can actually do that fairly soon. So for that reason, I'm, I'm not in favor of this agreement tonight. I would like to modify our approach and then come back again.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions or statements, board members? Jenny?
So what about moving? What are the, what are the considerations about moving the, that Tom raised about moving the building further into the park area? What kinds of delays would that cause and what kinds of?
So, two things. One is that the present design of the building, if placed on the western portion of the property, work back with the community of Erie and change land use, we need to, this community of Erie would need to work through a process, do that, a public process, and so that would take time, and they've talked to us about that timeline. It's not, it isn't automatic, and they need to go through a public review process, so it would extend some time. The other is, the present design of building would not be appropriate on that property without, and still be 1,000 feet away. To be 1,000 feet away in honor of the setback, it allows us a four-acre envelope to build the building on that's very linear by nature, just because of the way the land formation is, and so we believe the school would need to be redesigned. We think it would take at least a year, so set us back to the fall of 2018 and working with the architects to do that, and we have projected the additional costs for the project to be close to $5 million to do that, partly because of the redesign, but also just the cost of materials and labor that continues to go up. We've go, we've built inflationary factors into this bond, as you know, because we have phase one, two, and three, so we have projected increased costs throughout this bond. This particular project, we have close to $40 million earmarked for this, the entire project, so we, we have looked at that. We have not redesigned the building, we have not pursued changing of land use with the community of Erie, so the time window would change as far as opening and associated costs with that has been a concern we've expressed to you as a board, and, but that's, that's the in-depth analysis. We have not gone to redesign. We, the other thing I would mention, we have some concern about safety on the western edge of the property because access to the building would occur on a street that's an artery going into the neighborhood, and we think the entrance into the building and access to the building on the present proposed location and placement of the building would be safer for the children in access regarding pedestrian traffic as well as automobile thoroughfare through there. So those are some of the things we've looked at, Jenny. Impossible, no. We don't believe we can divide, design an adequate facility to accommodate 750 students in an envelope, a space envelope that would be outside of 1,000 feet. So if our goal of going through this is to get outside of 1,000 feet, we don't believe we can accomplish that and have an adequate facility. Certainly wouldn't be of the quality of which has been considered at this time.
Just as a follow-up to that, in terms of the distance issue, do we have any leeway at all in terms of moving the site or any leeway with Anadarko to have them move the wells should they drill a bit further away?
So what you have in your materials that you've received is that kind of the closest that the oil and gas wells, if developed, would be to the school, and that's 500 feet. If, we would continue to work with Anadarko or the surface lease owner to move, we believe there's flexibility on the existing 2.6 acres and property that adjoins that north and east to move the well sites. I mean, we're talking a few hundred feet, maybe less than 200, so not, there isn't a lot of flexibility, but we believe there's some flexibility with that. We have this design up against the west edge of the property that is adjacent to the park, and so with the present design. So we've, we've been able to achieve the 500 feet. Ultimately, if the wells are drilled on that property, could it be further away from that? We believe that's possible. We can't guarantee that today. We could potentially move the building further west under its present design, but we'd need to go through the change of land use with the community of Erie, and we are worried about the construction timeline. If we don't begin to move earth in April, then we won't have it open by the fall of 2017, and that's not a time window that would accommodate this change. So that's, that's what I know, Sam.
Other question, Tom?
Yeah, just to follow up. I think there's been some continual misunderstandings on my suggestion of moving the school over. I never was proposing building it on the park site and redesign the building. I was proposing that the current design of the building be shifted over and replating of the land so that the park then is on the other side and the school building then is moved further away from the well. So I never was proposing rebuilding everything. It would require replating and working with the city, obviously, to do that, and perhaps some, some redesign because of the different topology, but I'm never, never discussing completely redesigning the building, so I just want to make that clear.
Thanks for that clarification. Tina?
Yeah, so just first thanks to all the people who are here watching or here in the room and gave comment, and also people who might be watching through the TV viewing. And I'll just share with all of you how I'm thinking about this issue. So we were asked eight weeks ago to consider this idea of having a school within the $1,000, 1,000-foot setback, and it's been a tough eight weeks because I have no ability to assess the health and air quality reports that are out online. I'm not a scientist. We had eight weeks to come up to speed on sort of this whole fracking issue in Erie, and I think it's been hard because it's a very, very short timeline to understand all of the different arguments that are out there. But on the flip side, it was really helpful that the Erie community went and took, made a resolution to support the school because my sense is that you have a good understanding of what the setback means and what the risk might be, and I think that was really clear through all the commentary and all the emails that we received and through the resolution that the town passed. And I have a lot of respect for local communities and their voice in these kinds of decisions. What makes it difficult is I don't know if we'd come to the same decision in the community that I'm more familiar with in North and Central Boulder, and so that was hard, and I had to think about, well, does this set any precedent? Because I'm not sure we would come to the same conclusion if we had a drilling operation within 1,000 feet in Boulder. And so we did check with a lawyer, and I checked with the second lawyer outside of this, and there is no precedent we're setting for further types of, that would further facilitate drilling operations close to schools within BVSD. And so I think that was great, and, and then of course, there's the health and safety of the kids. This was really hard to get at. I really don't have the ability to see all the reports, and there are no definitive reports that we could find that clearly said yes or no, and is it 1,000 feet? Is it 900? Is it 1,100? It was really tough. So that's how I'm really thinking about this. I feel like the community has made a really strong voice. One of the comments was that we've been inundated with emails from people opposing this. I think I can say that we haven't been. So that was another interesting part about this, that we just haven't So, that was another interesting part about this, that we just haven't heard that voice, quite frankly. So, that was just, and I can see, I actually was expecting it too. And, you know, this didn't happen. And the other thing I just want to make sure is that if there is the plans to drill, a couple people have said that this is a way that we could fight with you to stop drilling. We're kind of like you. When we signed this contract, we're giving up the district and the board in the ability to sort of oppose that kind of drilling. So, individually, I can be there to support you, but I won't be there as a board member, as, as a district representative. So, those are the comments. That's what I'm thinking about. And I'm sorry I was a little inarticulate at the beginning.
No, it's great.
This is a lot of new vocabulary for me.
Thank you. Shelley?
I too want to thank you all for coming again. You've been very committed and passionate about this issue. And as I've said many times, that's what the board needs, is to hear what people are thinking. I also want to thank everyone who's worked on this proposal. I know it's been a lot of hard work, and we've asked a lot of questions that had to be answered quickly. So, I appreciate that. And I know there's been a lot of uncertainty around what's going on back here and what we've been talking about. So, I'm relieved that we're here tonight and that we can finally share our thinking about this proposal. So, as you know, Anadarko, Hines, the City of Erie, and BVSD are all advocating that we build this school at 500 feet from the proposed site, rather than the 1,000-foot setback recommended by the Oil and Gas Commission. And for me, whether to accept that recommendation really just hinges on one question, and that is whether it's safe for the kids or not. There's not too many other things that factor into this for me. So, we certainly know that there are risks associated with doing this. And those include leaks, spills, blowouts, air and water contamination. And, and we know that's true because that's why the setbacks exist. And that's why the Oil and Gas Commission requires operators to mitigate those risks. So, what's unclear to me is how well those mitigation procedures actually do the job, and whether the health and safety risks remain despite those mitigation attempts. So, since our primary concern, I think everyone up here, is the health and well-being of our students and staff, the board requested a briefing from the Colorado Department of Health to help us understand the potential health impacts of this proposal. And in response to our request for information, we received a four-year-old PowerPoint presentation that included the following less-than-reassuring statements. "We still do not understand a great deal about environmental health." "There are numerous data gaps related to oil and gas development's potential effect on human health, and such data gaps warrant further study." "Risk assessments are not an exact science and cannot be used to make realistic predictions about biological effects." "The need for research on chemical toxicity and public health impacts is a national challenge." We also heard from NIOSH that there's very little data on emissions and exposures from wells. And then, another assessment provided by CD-PHE said that, "Given a closed system with only wellheads and Christmas trees," like the ones we're talking about here, "BVSD will not see a plume on an ongoing basis." Now, this was really unsettling for me when I read that because I was told there were virtually no emissions from these kinds of, from this type of system. So, to read that, I mean, essentially an admission that there are emissions, but they may not be going on all the time. So, the, the bottom line from all of that is that I feel like there's just an appalling lack of information on this subject, which makes it really hard for people like us, elected officials, to make responsible, sound decisions about situations like tonight. So, nonetheless, we do have to make this decision, and we need to have a sound basis for making it. So, in addition to reading all the passionate emails we've received from all of you who, for the most part, want this school, I must say I agree with Tina. We have heard from some people that, you know, you would call environmental activists, but there haven't been that many, not nearly as many as I would expect. So, so I, I felt like I really had to do a lot of work to get up to speed. And so, I've educated myself about oil and gas operations as much as you can in, you know, six weeks. I've read the transcripts of the Oil and Gas Commission hearings around setbacks. I've reviewed the commission's statistics on leaks, spills, and blowouts. I've read their recommendations for mitigating risks at drilling and production sites. I've reviewed several independent human health impact studies related to oil and gas operations, as well as CD-PHE's analysis of those studies. I've gone out to Erie. I've walked the site. I've driven around the neighborhood. I've consulted with oil and gas experts, and I've talked with environmental consultants. I've listened to the Erie City Council deliberate on the subject. And I've tried to assess the likelihood that residents will be able to stop this drilling based on attempts to do so by other communities. And of course, I've carefully reviewed the Anadarko agreement. So, after processing all this information, it's clear to me why we have setbacks, air and quality, air and water quality monitoring, and all sorts of mitigation procedures in place. And that's because there's a fundamental incompatibility between industrial oil and gas activities and the activities of human beings that are living, working, and going to school in close proximity to those activities. And I know that many of you feel the same way. And you've reached the same conclusion because you've stated that your intent is to try and prevent Anadarko from, from drilling at the proposed site. So, whether you're going to be able to accomplish that or not remains a serious question for me, because other highly motivated communities have tried to do that with little success. And the agreement, as Tina said, that we're asked to sign expressly states that BVSD can't help Erie residents do that. So, in making this decision tonight, we have to assume that these wells will be active at some point. We have no evidence that would suggest they're not. We're avoiding current setback requirements and therefore accepting the risks of potentially greater impacts from leaks, spills, and blowouts. We have no assurances from the Health Department or NIOSH that the children in this school are going to be safe. And we're agreeing to potentially ongoing disruptions to summer activities at the school related to completing the well and then potentially or periodically refracturing at that site. So, given the concerns, all the concerns that I have about this, the only real question that remains for me is, should we approve this proposal anyway because of a promise the district made to the Erie community, frankly, without first consulting the board? So, I believe that that promise was premature, and we are now left with a very difficult choice tonight. On the one hand, we can choose a less-than-optimal site, I believe. And on the other hand, we can disappoint a large number of Erie residents who've been made a promise that they'll have a school in the fall of 2017. So, the only way I can conceive of solving this problem at this point is to ask Anadarko to move the wellheads farther away, or to push the school west, as several people have, have recommended. So, we're at least approaching the current setback, even if we're not able to get the entire school outside of a thousand feet, or to look for a, a new site altogether. So, I know that it sounds like each one of those efforts would delay the school for a year. But for me, the risk of building on this site with, you know, 500 feet away from four wells, and, and also less than a half a mile away from a production facility over which we have no control, those things outweigh the benefits of opening this school in 2017. And by the way, if we did that, we would be one of only 28 schools within 500 feet of an oil well in Colorado, all of which were built outside of existing setbacks at the time. So, this school could potentially be the only school in Colorado designed and built to be specifically within the 1,000-foot setback requirement. And I'm not sure that we want that distinction. So, tonight, we're voting on two things. One, whether to accept the deed to the site, and whether to accept the proposed agreement. And so, I asked myself, would, would this site even be acceptable if there were no wells adjacent to the property? And I would say yes, although I would still want to have some understanding of what emissions might be coming from the nearby production facility, and how those might impact the school. And then, I asked myself, is, is the site acceptable, given the fact that there would likely be these wells 500 feet from the school? And then, I would say no. And do I feel differently about that, given the proposed mitigation measures in the agreement? I would say I'm very glad they're there, that we worked for those, in case the board approves this proposal tonight. But no, I'm not really convinced that they're effective. And the reason I'm not convinced is because we don't have any data that says they're effective, and because no amount of mitigation has prevented leaks, spills, and blowouts at other locations. They've, they've happened despite mitigation procedures. So, I think that the Erie children deserve better, even if it means waiting a year to find a better situation. And as Tom said, we're building a school that could last, you know, I, I was thinking 40 to 50 years, but maybe it's more like 50 to 70 years, on a site that even if we take down the school, we might build another school on. So, there could be a school there for hundreds of years. We have no idea. And over that time, it's going to serve thousands of children, and many of them will come from well beyond the Flat Irons Meadows development. And I just don't think, as public servants, that we can choose to ignore the risks that come with the building in the proposed location. So, I would be willing to vote yes on the resolution to accept the title to the property if it didn't specify in the language that we need to build a school in the exact location that we're saying it should be in. That prevents us from moving it farther west, switching it with the park site, which might be acceptable if we could also get Anadarko to move the wells farther away. Then, I think we could have a solution right, right there. But if we retain the language in the resolution, you know, I, I would be voting no. And frankly, I really don't understand the, the concern that if we move the school west, that we would be so close to the road as to make it not feasible. I just don't see how being close to a road, which most of our schools are, is more dangerous than being next to wellhead. So, I, that, I don't understand that logic. So, in any case, so I would vote yes if the language weren't the way it is. And in any case, I, I will vote no on the agreement with Anadarko because there's no real commitment by them to, to move the wellheads or to try to move the wellheads. They say that they, you know, they'll consider it, they'll look at it. But in a contract, I just need more. I need them to be committed to, to doing that. And that's not the way the language reads. So, I just don't think drilling that close to the school, if the school's going to stay right where it is, is, is a good idea. So, if indeed we decide as a board tonight not to move forward with the school, I would direct this, you know, I would want the board to direct the superintendent to bring us an acceptable option for a school that would open in the fall of 2018, which is what was originally promised. So.
Thanks, Shelley. Kathy?
Thank you, President Fuqua, and thank you to all of you for coming out on a Tuesday night when I'm sure you have family and work and other professional and family obligations. So, I want to thank you for taking the time to write to us and to write your speeches and to gather petitions and to be the voice of your community. A couple things, and then I have a couple questions for the attorneys. I've been told I can ask some clarification questions. Won't surprise those of you who don't know me that I'm an attorney. And so, I had a couple questions that I just want to make sure I understand. Generally, I support, given all of the work that the administration has done, and all the work that the attorneys have done, and all the work that the district has done, and the community and the town, accepting the risk of building a school there. And as with my fellow board members, my biggest concern, given that that's where I start from, is how do we ensure the health and safety of, of the children and the families that will be going to that school? So, a couple questions. And I also wanted to, to join with what Tina and Shelley said before I get to my specific questions, because it was pretty clear to me that what the community is hoping is that by building this school, there will be additional pressure put on whoever the developer of the oil and gas will be to not do that. And I just want everyone to have no misunderstanding that as a district, we are waiving any ability to do that. Obviously, as Tina said, individually, we can do what we want to do, but as a district, and I'm sure the attorneys and Bruce will correct me if I'm wrong, we are waiving that if we agree to go forward tonight. So, whatever you as a community need to do, the district will not be able to take a position either for or against any of the action if and when Anadarko, whoever the driller decides to go forward. So, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page, because I've been hearing that as a theme repeatedly from members of the community. And I understand that, but I just want to make sure everybody is clear on that.
We're, we're not in a back-and-forth mode.
So, I just, I just want to make sure that when it comes to enforcing an agreement, obviously, if we're a party to a contract and the contract isn't being complied with, then obviously that puts us in a different position. But as far as being able to take a position as to whether they actually go forward with the drilling, we aren't able to do that. So. So, one of the questions I have is, right now, we're dealing with Anadarko, but in the oil and gas industry, especially now with oil and gas prices as low as they are, you see a lot of moving of companies selling things, you know, other companies that can't afford the debt selling off their properties. And so, what I want to make sure is that this contract is binding on any successors and assigns, so that if, in fact, Anadarko decides to sell their rights to this, whoever decides to purchase this is bound by the same obligations, so that they can't say, oh, that was something that the district agreed with Anadarko, but we're not Anadarko and we don't have to do any of the mitigation. And so, one of the questions I had is if one of the attorneys could explain to me how they read paragraph 2K, because it seems to me that that relieves any subsequent assign or successor from any obligation to do any air monitoring. Because if I don't have an IOC and I choose to call it a ZOC, then am I relieved of any obligation to do any air monitoring? So, maybe I'm misreading that. So, I was just asking for some clarification to make sure that if there is a subsequent purchaser, that they would be required to continue to do air monitoring.
Ask our attorney to respond, either Dick Bump or Phil Barber. And then, after that response, you can ask your second question.
I think I can respond to that. I think that is the only provision in the entire agreement that is not binding on successors. And the reason for that, I believe, is because that term IOC is, I think, particular to Anadarko, what they have determined to name their facility. They have a facility that monitors oil and gas emissions from all its wells, as I understand it, on a 24/7 basis. They also have the ability to shut down a well when they see anything going on with that. I think that was the reason that they, they pulled that out, because we're not sure whether a successor in the future would have an IOC or something else like that. But certainly, if, our expectation would be that the same requirements of the Oil and Gas Commission and all of the other mitigation measures in the agreement would apply to them, including best management practices and the other mitigation requirements. So, I think that is the only issue, is whether or not it would be named an IOC or not.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, this is also the only language in the mitigation agreement that deals specifically with 24/7 emission testing, other than what would be called for in best practices, whatever those would be defined as at the time.
The 24/7 requirement is an Anadarko, I think, particular thing that they do with best management practices. The agreement does have a provision that allows the Boulder Valley Schools to do a 24/7 monitoring of the emissions at the boundary as long, as much as it wants to. So, we would consider recommending that in the future, so that Boulder Valley has its own data in that regard.
But we wouldn't have any ability to require a successor entity to do 24/7 monitoring. We would do that on our own.
I think we would, we would, to the extent that best management practices, which is what we're saying, is a 24/7 monitoring, which is what Anadarko's doing, is acknowledged also by the Oil and Gas Commission, we would expect that to be complied with. And the best management practices, a defined term in the agreement, is binding on successors. So, in that sense, we would have an argument that we would require that, yes.
And it's my understanding that there are numerous safety protocols required by the COGCC. What I want to make sure is that if and when this is drilled, that the safety requirements would include Boulder Valley School District, so that we become part of the safety protocol. So, that is, because- so that, because the chances are probably better than not that there won't be such a thing, but we want to make sure we have the protocols and things in place in case the unforeseen and that should happen, and so that it is part of what Anadarko does, because it's not Anadarko's, and I don't mean this to sound as harsh as it's going to sound, but it's not Anadarko's position to look out for the health and safety of the children, it's our job. So, I need to make sure that whatever the safety protocols are, that whoever is doing the drilling, that we are part of that safety protocol. So, what, I don't see that in here. I know, I think I know what the answer's going to be, but I would like some assurance that it's not just best practices, but that we would have some ability to make sure that if something were to happen, that Boulder Valley School District would be notified immediately. I mean, first, you'd call the fire engine, or whatever you need to do, but that, you know, that we are in that protocol to make sure that our children, and our teachers, and our staff, and our families are safe.
As we've indicated, and I defer to my colleague here, Mr. Barber, but he points out that there are, in the regulations themselves of the commission, the 300 series, the 400 series, the 600 series, the 800 series, 900 series, 1,000, and 1,100 series of their rules all relate to safety issues. In addition, there is a separate section under mitigation measures required by the new rule that was adopted in 2013, which is at 604C, that says that during the rule consultation under these 300 series rules, the operator may develop a mitigation plan to address local, location-specific considerations not otherwise addressed by specific mitigation measures identified in this section 604C. So, we would definitely be at the table at that point in time with that specific issue in mind, if we did not feel that there were adequate safety measures in place.
I just wish that said "will" instead of "may."
You understand, and that's, the saying "may" does not preclude us from being there at that table to negotiate that.
Another question I have, that's kind of a technical question, is, isn't it true that to operate, you have to post a bond, so that if there were some kind of damage or something that were to occur, that wouldn't fall on the shoulders of the school district, but presumably fall on the shoulders of the operator? They have to post bonds before they do the drilling and while they're operating, is that correct?
Yes, Phil Barber here. That is correct, and there are really two or three levels of bonds. There's a bond that the operator has to post any time that it operates a well in Colorado. There's also an environmental mitigation fund that the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission maintains, that's created by a tax on all production in the state of Colorado. If the bond is insufficient in cases, the Oil and Gas Commission can either go after the assets of the company, or it can use the environmental mitigation fund to make whatever mitigation needs to be done.
So, the financial risks of that would fall on either the oil and gas company or on some fund, is my understanding from your answer?
Correct.
And I think what I would just like to do, and the other question I had is, my understanding is when you drill, you have to do a testing for the composition of the gas, and while I understand that H2S is very unusual in Colorado, I believe whoever drills would have to be testing for H2S, because that's one of the most toxic gases that could come as a result of this, and so I'm assuming that all that kind of testing would be done ahead of time, and they would be able to mitigate any H2S if, on the rare chance that were found.
You're absolutely correct that H2S is fairly rare in Colorado. I've been specializing in oil and gas law for 35 years, and the only time I've ever even heard of it is out on the eastern plains near Yuma. It has to do with the type of sedimentary deposit that exists in Colorado versus, say, Texas, or even maybe parts of Wyoming. So, rarely do you see H2S, but you are correct that both the Occupational Safety and Health Administration and NIOSH, as well as the Oil and Gas Commission, require that gas and oil production be tested and analyzed for its component parts.
And so, are both of you comfortable that we have enough safety protocols in place here to protect the health and welfare of the students, should the unforeseen happen with the agreement as it's written? Am I safe to say that that would be your recommendation, given the language in the current agreement?
I am satisfied myself. I have, with Phil Barber's assistance, learned a lot as well about oil and gas operations in the last year, and I believe that Anadarko has been very forthcoming with us. They are recognized as a sound operator, and we, as a result of that, they have included mitigation measures that protect, I think, the health and safety of students in the future, to the extent that we know that those exist. And I think the fact that they have agreed to do that, and agreed to allow this agreement to modify the surface use agreement, protects us in the future in the event it would be a different operator.
Can I add to that? So, part of the process that we went through when we were developing this agreement were to have extensive conversations with the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission's health and safety experts, with the National Institutes of Occupational Safety and Health, and with the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment. And I have to say, as a lawyer, you kind of are trained to look for problems and issues, and what we were really looking for is some assurance from people who are experts in the area, that proceeding as the school district might proceed would not endanger the kids. That was really our primary function, and we tried to draft the agreement in a way that assured that. And so, I would think there are three components in this agreement that I would call out to say that we did the job that we were assigned to do. First of all, the two primary areas of health concern that we heard from both NIOSH and from the CDPE were that production facilities, storage facilities, where you have these tanks that you'll see out on the highway, you'll have venting stacks, you'll see things that are called separators and dehydrators, none of that equipment will be present on this site, and that was definitely called out by all of the experts we talked to as a positive point for the district's agreement. So, I think that's a very positive thing that we can point to, to say that the health and safety of the families, and the children, and the students will be protected, you know, to the extent that anybody can protect them. The second thing is that we have assured from Anadarko with a lot of negotiation that Anadarko will only drill when the school is not in session. So, we've set aside a 60-day period during the summer, where Anadarko has agreed that it would limit its operations, which is frankly not something Anadarko has to do. I mean, right now, there is a surface use agreement on this site that allows Anadarko basically to drill whenever it wants to, and so we've taken a big step away from that. And I would say the third area that I'd call out is an example of what is something that protects the students, is that you have the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, and, you know, you have pros and cons from people about how effective it is. You know, frankly, blowouts are not, well, blowouts are very rare in Colorado. There are 50,000 wells currently producing in Colorado, and how often have any of us ever picked up a newspaper and read about a blowout? Probably once in the last 10 years, is my recollection. But the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission has special mitigation rules that would apply to this very situation, which is that when a well would be drilled within or closer than 1,000 feet to a high-density use, which would be a school, or a hospital, or any facility like that, the commission has passed special mitigation rules, which are incorporated into this agreement, and other mitigation standards that we've negotiated with Anadarko are in there too. Now, I'm not somebody who is a cheerleader for the oil and gas industry, I represent the city of Longmont, and so, you know, I've seen lots of different sides of this argument. So, I'm just trying to give you the facts, more than personal opinion, and the opinion of the experts was that this was very adequate in terms of health and safety protections.
Would you agree that the primary risk would be through air emissions, as opposed to, I agree that blowouts and others are more rare, but that there could be occasional air emissions, which we can test for on our own, even if we can't persuade Anadarko or a successor to test for?
To be honest with you, I think that's probably secondary or tertiary, and the reason is that the complaint levels you see at the commission are, first of all, traffic, and secondly, noise and lighting. So, the air emissions moves down the list, and the emissions would be primarily, if ever, during the drilling phase, which will be when the kids aren't there.
And the traffic and the other are primarily when they're drilling as well?
Correct.
And has it been your experience working with COGCC that when new health and safety evidence comes forward that they're responsive? I mean, I find myself in the same position as the rest of the board, that you have to rely on the government agency that's been charged with protecting our health and safety, but we also see examples where our government unfortunately has fallen down on that, but you still have to, I think, step up and trust the people that we've employed to do that work. And so, in your experience, should health and safety studies, you know, in the future show that there are, in fact, risks, has it been your experience that they have been responsive in reacting to that? Because I think regulations are going to be stronger than anything we could do if that kind of science comes forward.
Folks, we're in the period of board deliberation, and so we would prefer that you withhold your comments.
You know, I prefer to, again, limit myself to the facts. A couple of the things that the Oil and Gas Commission has instituted just in the last couple of years that would tend to answer that question, yes. There's mandatory water testing now that there didn't used to be three years ago for the aquifer, that's probably about 600 feet below the level of the surface. The other thing that's happened is that the commission is now, has done away with, well, there used to be open pits that they'd put product and chemicals and fracking waste into, that's no longer allowable, and they have gone to what they call green completion, which means everything that comes, that goes into the well and comes out of the well is self-contained and is not exposed to the air.
Thanks. So, I think I'm where Tina is, which is, we have to listen to what the community voice is, which has been overwhelmingly supportive. I appreciate the petition. I expected, as other board members have said, a lot, this is Boulder, after all, a lot more strenuous and numerous complaints about proceeding with this, and so it's not my position on the board, I don't think, to go against the will of the community. I don't want to be seen as just listening to the loudest voices or the most voices, but when you weigh it on balance, it seems like the community has spoken pretty strenuously that way. But like I said, I don't, I've struggled with that, because I don't want to think that just because we've had voices step forward, that that's the voice of the community, but I think the 400 or some people who have signed the survey and other efforts you've done to try to show that it's not just a few isolated voices that are stepping forward has been really helpful, and I know it's been a lot of time and effort on your part to bring that forward. So, I think that's all my questions. Thank you for entertaining them, and I appreciate the thoughtful responses.
Thanks, Kathy. I want to make sure, Richard, do you have anything to add, before we go back around to board members who have already spoken?
I think I'll wait until everybody has a chance to speak. I'd like to be last.
I think you are. I'm observing.
Well, I live in Erie, I live at Raffa Ho Ridge, that school's going to be in my backyard. I see hundreds of kids in my neighborhood. I also understand the fact that the community has spoken, and I want to thank you very, very much for all of your strong efforts to make sure that this school is built on time, on the spot that we said we were going to build it, and I am ready to vote.
Well, let me see if board members have any additional comments before we do that and round. And let me just say, you know, I think although we may not all agree when we vote, I know that we all put the health and safety of the kids at the top of the list. You know, we may disagree on acceptable risk. I know that you all do, I know that our staff does, our attorneys, and everybody involved, so just a reminder that I'll back whatever the majority of the board votes on and stand behind it, but I know that folks who may vote on the other side of me care just as much about the health and safety of the kids. We always put that first. I'm persuaded by a few things. The elected body of the town of Erie has voted, I think, almost unanimously to go ahead with the school on this site on the timeline. We've heard from professionals, from experts, because we are not those. We also, you know, Shelley and I talked about, we both visited the site, right, and took a look at the lay of the land, and I have concerns if we were to shift it over about bringing the school closer to the, what I believe is a production and collection facility, and there's a potential for some greater risk there, although it would still be pretty far away. Moving it closer does give me pause. I appreciate that we're not going to drill when school is in session, I think that's critically important, and I hope, Dr. Messenger, that, this is just one board member speaking, that we will be really aggressive about our ongoing monitoring at this school site. So, I'll be voting yes. We can call the roll. Call the vote, Laura. Have you had a motion with the second?
Okay, the motion on the table is to approve the resolution approving the setback and mitigation agreement and accepting title to tract G, filing number two, Flat Irons Meadows. Val Val?
Yes.
Benford?
No.
Fuqua?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
No.
Motion passes.
All right, everybody, we're adjourned. Thank you.